Oh, it's being recorded and I call this meeting to order. Would everyone please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you have to teach our fields? Youth Commissioner Donika?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Chiapi?
Yeah.
Commissioner Ocampo?
Here.
Commissioner Trapp?
Here.
Vice Chair Witcher?
Here.
Chair Fields?
Here.
Would you have a form for tonight's meeting?
Thank you.
Excellent, ladies. As a friendly reminder, although we've heard this now many times, we are holding meetings in hybrid mode. Information on how to provide public comments is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. For those of you in the room. For those of you within this meeting, please fill out a request to speak form and submit it to the recording secretary. If anyone is joining us on Zoom, it actually does look like there are a few people joining us on Zoom. Perhaps? Join a Zoom meeting by clicking on the link. This is instructions for how to do it. At the top of the agenda, use the raise your hand button to be called upon at the appropriate time. Please unmute yourself only when called upon. Somewhat counterintuitive, but nonetheless, I will still read. Phone and participation can be done by calling 408-638-0968. With the conference ID 7383810237 and the passcode 492152. This actually probably does apply. You press star nine to raise your hand to be called upon and star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until a public comment is closed for a specific item. Very good. So with that, the first item on our agenda is a really lovely and sentimental one. We have a new commissioner and I want to introduce her to share some thoughts about herself. Welcome, Commissioner.
Hi, my name is Breanna Ocampo. I am a Samatero born and raised. I went to Parkside, Bayside, and Aragon and even CSM a little bit. I have two children, one seventeen and one twenty. One goes Aragon currently and the other goes Skyline. He's part of the Parks program. I'm very passionate about Samatero for obvious reasons. I am also the spearheading team up to cleanup. So if any of you are interested in joining cleanup, it's the second Saturday of each month. I'd love to have you. A front cleanup is next month or this month, actually. So hope for that. I'm really excited to be part of the Parks and Recreation Commission. I love our parks. I used it. I live next to Duaneville Park and I go there probably multiple times a week to walk the dog. And I'm looking forward to using it.
Thank you. Well, welcome. We're very happy to be a full commission yet again. And I can get the thing of having these meetings run because you're not shy to ask questions. Not that way, not the question. Excellent.
Commissioner, sorry to interrupt. We did receive a comment that it's a little hard to hear. So just elevator going.
Absolutely. I will speak up and out then. And so welcome to our newest commissioner. The next item of business, the consent calendar. Do I have a motion for approval? Or wow, the last one we met was Julie Fit. Maybe this felt a little loud, had it? All right, very good. So can I get a motion for approval of the minutes from our June fifth meeting?
Absolutely.
Excellent. Joanna, please call the rule.
Would you have to teach our fields? Vice Chair Witcher?
Aye.
Commissioner Trapp?
Aye.
Commissioner Chiapi?
Aye.
Commissioner Ocampo?
Aye.
Chair Fields?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion is passed.
Excellent. A real nail, but. Very good. Next. Public comment. If anyone has a public comment that they wish to make. So now it's for public comment on non-agendized items. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the commission at this time. State law prevents us from taking action on any matter not yet on the agenda. Your comments may refer to staff to follow up. Public comment is limited to a total of fifteen minutes. However, an opportunity for additional public comment may be provided later in the agenda. Additionally, we welcome speakers to provide public comment, but please be advised this is a limited public forum. As such, speakers must stay on topic if speaking on a particular item, that's for later. And if speaking during general comment, that's what's happening right now. They must address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Speakers fail to follow these rules, then will be warned. And if they continue to disobey our rules, their opportunities to speak will be ended. Do we have any general non-agendized public comments?
We do not have any in Samatero. Or in person, I think so.
Excellent. Very good. And that moves us on to some new business.
Can I interrupt for a moment?
Yes.
Because I know a couple of people joined us after we are.
Yes, please, by all means.
Just reiterate what the speaker slips.
Ah, yes. So welcome members of the public who are joining us here or on Zoom. If you wish to make a public comment during a particular item, please refer to the agenda. See what the item bumper is. Take one of those neon slips, fill out the information on the slip and hand it to Joanna, who's right here. She will collect the slips from you and at the appropriate time can be called upon to make a public comment. Excellent. Thank you, Joanna. Alright. Okay, item number three, new business, solar carport installation at Beresford Park. This is an informational item and we will be receiving a staff presentation from a sustainability analyst and Andrea. I'm at here.
A little bit of a delay.
Okay, thank you. Alright. Good evening, Chair Fields and Park and Recreation Commission and members of the community. My name is Andrea Chow. I'm the sustainability analyst with the city of Samatero. And tonight I'm here to provide a presentation on the installation of solar carports at Beresford Park in the parking lot on Parkview Way. So the city has a climate action plan and we're very proud to be a longtime leader in sustainability. We have goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, forty-nine percent below our 2005 baseline by 2030. And the city's most recent greenhouse gas emissions inventory shows that the city reduced emissions twenty-two percent below that baseline in 2019, but we still have a ways to go, even though that really does mark some tremendous progress on our climate action plan implementation. So a little bit of background on the project and how we got here. Peninsula and Energy, who is our partner, they're a joint powers authority that was developed in 2016 to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in our community by providing electricity from clean energy sources. And then as a local agency, PCE, reinvests that money in their service territory, so in Samatero County. And in the past, the city has had the opportunity to participate in multiple programs that they provide. And one of their current programs is the solar and storage on public buildings program. And this provides cities an opportunity to install solar on their municipal site and enter into a public purchase agreement or a PPA. So a little bit about PPAs and the structure that this program has. These are twenty-year agreements that are structured so that PCE has a contractor to handle the design, the procurement, the installation, and also the maintenance of the solar system at city facilities. And then the city then purchases the electricity that is produced by those solar panels at a fixed rate. And so that allows the city to avoid any rate increases in electricity over the term of the agreement. And then at the end of that twenty years, there's options to buy the system, to extend the agreement, or to have the panels removed. To participate in this program, the city had to identify sites to submit an interconnection application to PG&E in 2023. And then we had to make sure that system could be installed within three years of that application submission, so by 2025. Because of the twenty-year term of the PPA, city facilities where there are necessary roof replacements or planned major repairs or renovations, which could have site-wide impact, were ultimately removed from consideration. Beresford Rec Center was identified to move forward with the program because it had the greatest degree of certainty that the city could maintain those twenty-year, the terms of the twenty-year term. So the project team evaluated the installation of solar at the rec center building itself and also all three parking lots at the park. The Beresford Rec Center was built in 1967 and the rec center is overdue for replacement. The rec center is on a priority list for roof replacement, but funding and timing for the roof replacement is not yet been identified unless the rec center could not be considered for this program for solar installation. The parking lots on Parkside Way and Alameda Deos Bogus, these are heavily shaded by existing trees along the perimeter of the parking lot and require the removal of heritage trees to accommodate the installation of solar carport. There's also a concern about the Alameda Deos Bogus parking lot and a potential conflict with existing light fixtures that provide light to a bus stop on that street. Those two parking lots also required the greatest amount of trenching and traversing of the paved areas for infrastructure installation, which would be more costly and disruptive and also labor intensive for project construction, which leaves the last parking lot at the park, the lot on Parkview Way. It's the sunniest of three locations and requires no tree or light fabric removal and the least amount of trenching of paved areas. However, Parkview Way is the one that is closest to rec center.
So can you just go back on the, I'm having a hard time reading that map. Is there a way to? Yeah, can you, can you take away the conference room so we can see the map as a full screen?
Um, let me.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
Or is this, this is our, this is our packet, nevermind. I can just find the way to page.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm having a hard time understanding the objective of the topic, but.
Oh, sure. Well, let me talk about the map just a little bit so that we can orient ourselves. So this is a map of Beresford Park. We've got Beresford Rec Center, the building on the, and my mouse is very delayed, but we've got Beresford Rec on the east corner, southeast corner of the park. And then the parking lots I was referring to, we've got one parking lot that's a long Alameda Deos Bogus. And then one parking lot that's near the Samatero Garden Center. And then the third parking lot, which is identified as the project site on Parkview Way, which is on the west side of the park, just north of the community garden.
Perhaps just quickly you could point out the parking lot.
Yeah.
If you could walk up to it and put your finger on it so that there's no confusion.
Yeah. This is a touchscreen too. Of course it is. Yeah. And then, um, there is a site map in your packet.
No, I think all I did was, I thought it was on page two. Thank you. Okay, awesome.
Okay, so the project team estimates the installation of two solar carports on that parking lot on Parkview Way. So this is kind of facing the community garden where you enter the parking lot. These carport structures total seventy-six KW of solar and the system is expected to generate one hundred and eighteen thousand kilowatt hours in the first year. And this will be more than enough to power the Beresford Recreation Center. Through the PPA, there are no upfront costs to the city and savings are expected in the second year of solar generation. And then that fixed PPA rate will save them up the city money over the lifetime of the project. The project team anticipates trimming trees and removing bushes to accommodate the carport structures. You can start to see where the piers are located and in the landscaping area. But the project will not result in the removal of any trees or the loss of parking. And then the project team is still working on evaluating the cost of boring and hand touching. And so that's where the wire in the conduit to connect to the rec center. But they're going to aim for minimal disturbance to the park. So the city did receive some public comments that I wanted to address about the project. There were several comments concerned about the appearance of the solar carport. And I want to acknowledge that because, I want to acknowledge this concern and the fact that this parking lot is indeed the closest to residents along Parkview Way. And then also highlight the measures that were available to us to minimize the visual impact of the solar carport. So the solar carports do contain lighting, but that lighting is shielded and pointed downwards. So that should minimize, minimize any light pollution. We'll also be sure to use colors and materials that are compatible with carport surroundings and other structures in the park. The carport structure itself is a height of thirteen feet. And so we're hopeful that this minimizes the obstruction of the tree canopy and the height of the trees that are in Beresford Park. In terms of parking, the project will not result in the long-term loss of parking. During heavy construction, there will be a temporary closure of that parking lot, which is estimated to be about two to three weeks. For wildlife, this is an already developed site in a residential neighborhood. So there's no, and there's also no protected wildlife on this site. Oh. And then I also wanted to address two more comments that I received. One was about fireworks and that there's a lot of firework activity at this park site. And so staff will be sure to coordinate with the police department, especially during fireworks season, to ensure there's no safety impacts. And then I also got a comment about shade concerns to the community garden. So the structure is again thirteen feet tall and it's estimated to be about twenty feet away from the nearest garden bed. The carport structure does not extend past the edge of the parking lot. And so there's quite a bit of area, whether it's sidewalk or garden area, that kind of buffers between the carport structure and the next garden bed. And since the structure is located north of the community garden, it will not interfere with the southern sun exposure, which that community garden enjoys a lot of for the majority of the day. And there will be limited impacts to the northern garden beds. And I can work with the city of, the city's partner, Peninsula Clean Energy, to talk about the details of the shade impacts with those who are interested. This is a slide showing the timeline of the project. So at the end of 2023, Peninsula Clean Energy selected McMills to be the contractors for this project, along with their suite of projects that they're working on throughout Samatero County. PCE is now working with other cities to execute power purchase agreement. And so the city, Samatero City Council will consider the power purchase agreement for this project at the upcoming September sixteenth city council meeting. It has been a multi-year process to identify sites within the city to be eligible within this program. I want to thank people for submitting their comments and their feedback. All of the comments that were submitted for this meeting will be included in that September sixteenth agenda packet. And then a little bit about the construction impacts. PC estimates project constructions begin in spring of next year with all construction lasting six to eight weeks. But the heavy construction, such as the excavating of the foundations, erecting the carport structures themselves, that should be completed in about two weeks. And that's when the parking lot would be closed. And if you're familiar, that parking lot kind of splits into two. So we've got the project site and then the north side of that parking lot, closer to the Beresford Picnic Shelter, that would remain open during that time. So we're talking about the loss of parking specifically temporarily limited to that site where the solar carports will be installed. And then the other construction activities outside of that two-week period will include wiring, trenching and to gain that interconnection to the facility. And then looking beyond this project, after the installation, any operational or maintenance issues are covered through the power purchase agreement with PCE and would be their responsibility moving forward. And then. This is my last slide. I have a thank you slide, but this project will generate local renewable energy in alignment with our climate action plan. It will provide shade to parked cars. And it's also a cost positive project for the city with no upfront costs and reduced electricity costs over the lifetime of the project. And that concludes my presentation.
Excellent. Thank you very much. For the sake of our newest commissioner and the fact that we haven't met in a while, I just want to, again, thank you, really appreciate the information. Give a little bit of information about sort of what happens next. So next, we're going to take a public comment first from Zoom and then from the room, if there is any. Then we will close public comment. Should it be appropriate, staff will respond to any questions from public comments. If that's what makes sense. Then we'll bring it back to the commission for questions to staff and the discussion from commissioners. I always said this at the beginning, that this is an informational item as Andrea implied. Ultimately, the decision here goes to city council, but we are here to give feedback and guidance. But we will not be taken aback on this matter. So that being said, hopefully that just clears the group. We will take public comment first, I said, from Zoom and then from in the room. If there's any public comment from Zoom, if you are on Zoom, please use the raise hand button to be called upon. And please unmute yourself only when called upon. Joanna, do you have any public comment from Zoom?
We do.
Looks like no. Excellent.
So to the chair, if I could just do a reminder of the speaking form. If you're interested in speaking on this item, please complete one of these forms that are right there and just hand it over and I can call your meeting.
Yep, let's, let's take a moment.
This is for this item?
Yeah.
Chair Fields, we still do not have any Zoom hands, but we do have thirty in person speakers.
Excellent. Let's have public comment at three minutes each. I don't think, hopefully we'll need more than that. Certainly, there's always the council meeting, additional comments, but three minutes each. Joanna, please.
First speaker we have is James.
Speaker right here. Hi, everyone. My name is James Bollier. My wife Janet and I lived across the street on Twenty-Eighth Avenue from beautiful Beresford Park since almost the seventies. I've been in there since the seventies. And this reminds me of an issue that came up many years ago. In nineteen eighty-eight, the park was remodeled and an idea was proposed and it was in the plan. And it was down at the rec center. They were going to turn the community gardens into a parking lot. And all the gardeners and all the neighbors are like, well, what do we need a parking lot? We don't need a parking lot. We have three parking lots. And well, it's in the plan, you know, and we're moving forward. It's like, wait a minute, let's talk about this. And it turned out, we wanted to build a parking lot there because the city gets so many phone calls from the neighbors about the parking on the street. And, but the people that are calling move in across the street from a park. People come to the park and enjoy the park. And it, we really kind of all came to the conclusion, the city, the park and the neighbors that people come to the park to enjoy the things that are in the park, to step away from the industrial concrete world that we all live in and enjoy the nature and the beauty that the park has often. And I'm speaking against the solar panels because I feel that it will bring an industrial feel to a setting that we can't get enough of as citizens. And people come from far and wide to this park. People come to beautiful sunny Samatero because, you know, it's foggy in the north or it's, it's too crowded in other areas. And people park in front of our house all day long and I love it. And I, I just want you to think of who is really going to benefit from this? Will it be people that come to the park? Will it be the neighbors? Or will it just be the bottom line or the financial? And I understand the entire global perspective of trying to do the right thing. But I think asking the citizens of Tamatain to use a little less gas, buy a little less plastic, be better global citizens and keep the beautiful park that we have the way it is. I feel this, the shielded solar panels will really turn that into kind of a desolate wasteland up there because of the impact it has on the sun. And to what benefit, just for a few dollars. And that's the reason I'm speaking against it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next speaker, Barbara Nelson.
Hello, I'm Barbara Nelson and I live on seven hundred twenty-seventh avenue. So I'm on the corner of Beresford, Beresford Park at Parkview, but relevantly on the north side, this side of the parking lot that is closest to the picnic structure. Now, one of the things you said was that the reason for choosing the half of the parking lot that is kind of more open and visible to everybody is because you didn't want to have to deal with removal of heritage trees. There are nine eucalyptus trees directly between my property and the park. There were twelve. One fell down last winter. One was taken down about a month ago because it was leaning directly over the building in the parking lot and was in danger. And a third one was taken down because it was also deemed to be in danger. The other nine, it is only a matter of time before those are all going to be taken down. They all lean on the park. They're all the same age. They're all of the same root structure. They're all likely to fall over. So given that that side of the parking lot, you know, you're not doing us a favor by preserving those nine heritage trees. It's only a matter of time before they fall over. So maybe it would be worth considering that side. I know it's closer to my home, but I actually think it would be far less obtrusive to the overall park if the solar panels were put over on that side by removing those trees. We would be charmed to remove those trees. They are a major liability right in front of us. And consider that as a potential alternative so that you still achieve the goal of having the solar panels in the park. They're not quite as in your face in the front of the park where everybody's looking. They're a little tucked over to the side and I think they don't get equivalent sun, assuming the nine eucalyptus trees were taken down. Thank you.
Third speaker, Colleen Dieterle.
Dieterle, sorry about that.
That's okay. I live at seven oh one Twenty-Seventh Avenue. And I spoke with Andrea before I even showed up. We are primarily the ones that get to look at it. And I appreciate the industrial look to it. I would invite any of you guys to walk on Twenty-Seventh Avenue, look to the east and say, is this going to be a good idea in this park where it's at? I appreciate what you're trying to do. I do like actually doing it over on our side and maybe using it as a shelter too. I didn't understand whether it has to be a parking lot and that's a done deal or not. But I would also be concerned, can you flip back to any of your slides easily? I think your second one. Where it shows a view of what it's going to look like.
Sorry, are you looking for rendering?
That one. That one. That if I'm looking at where it's at, this is the basketball court and it looks like they're all sloped to the west. Correct. I don't know what the reflection is on this stuff, but I can tell you I'm right across the street from it. I'm not thrilled with the idea and I don't know whether that's taken into account or not. Thank you.
Speaker, still no speakers online.
Very good. Then with that, we will close public comment. Staff, are there any responses to questions or concerns that were raised that you'd like to offer this time?
Sure, I can offer for site identification, I think two things were brought up. Just, well, how did we end up at the location that we evaluated? I talked a little bit about the different parking lots and the goal of finding a site that was least at least expensive to install and also didn't require expensive renovations that would have to be budgeted for in advance. I think I'd just like to bring up again the timeline that this project is under, just the constraints of the project and needing it to be completed within the next three years and that kind of constraining where we were able to move forward with citing and installing the solar carport. And then also to glare reflectivity. I did get another comment about glaring reflectivity from a nearby resident and I was assured by the contractors that with the height of the solar carport that the glare and reflectivity wouldn't be a concern. And I think one thing that is confusing maybe from the renderings is that it does seem and appear very shiny, but I was assured that that wasn't a realistic characterization of the carports.
I would just add also that the height of the carports is right around 12, 13 feet, which is generally in line with the roofline of a typical one-story house or with the transition between a one or a two-story house. So it usually is above the window of the first floor and below the window of the second floor. And if you were to envision that slide again, the sled was very shallow. So it's not something that is going to like directly reflect into somebody's window. It was a shallow, so it does reflect more up than toward the residences.
Okay, excellent. Sorry, public comment just.
Can you respond to these comments?
No. With that, I will say that we will now take questions from the commission. Since I did see a hand up, I will just clarify that they're, since you're not voting on this item, it's an informational item and will be turned by the city council on September 16th. We're welcome to make questions there. With that, I will start to my left and ask vice chair to share any questions.
I do. Thank you very much for the presentation. And I always recognize that you're still here at work at 7:35 in the evening, so thank you for that. Have we used this partner before versus our first time with this partner?
We've partnered with Peninsula Clean Energy on a variety of programs, but not specifically through installing solar carports. But yes, they are frequent partners with the city.
Okay, so it's our first solar carport with them?
It is our first solar carport with them. They have run this program once before, so they are installing 12 solar systems, not necessarily carport systems, but 12 solar systems with 10 different public agencies throughout San Mateo County as part of their first round of the program. And then their second round includes the city of San Mateo and 10 other agencies as well. So they are gaining experience in that space.
Yeah, I've had a couple of conversations and they have a good reputation. What is the three-year time constraint, could you mention?
Yes, yeah. So the three-year time constraint has to do with net energy metering. And that is California, that is dictated by the California Public Utilities Commission. There is going to be a change in the net energy metering, which changes the project economics. So with essentially the financials when it comes to being a solar owner and what you can sell your excess solar for. And so the whole three-year timeframe was very critical because we, well, Peninsula Clean Energy on behalf of the city of San Mateo submitted an interconnection application before this change. And so it guarantees the more favorable solar product rate.
Great. It's what, 120,000 kilowatt hours?
Yes.
That's a ton.
Yeah.
Ten houses. Do we get to sell it back?
So we, so through the PPA, we purchased the energy that is produced by the solar carport. So it is sized to produce enough for a rec.
Okay, so I'll just assume that it's generating a lot more than the rec center needs and that partner will be able to sell that electricity somewhere else via the access.
Yes.
And that's part of their financial model?
Yes.
Do we, so we're the largest city on the peninsula? Do we get the most preferential pricing from them accordingly, like we should?
No, there's no preferential pricing for the city of San Mateo. All the cities receive the same rate for their PPA. There's variation if you have a solar carport system versus if you have a solar system on the roof.
Could we, could we not negotiate that since, again, we're what, four times the size of San Carlos?
I'm unable to negotiate further on the power purchase agreement and the rate people have provided.
Thought for the future. Those are, those are my questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Trapp, any questions?
One, and then I guess just an add-on.
Please.
An add-on to, so you said it's a three-year window. So if we don't do anything, there isn't any out-of-pocket costs and there's, we just don't reap benefits of installing a solar panel if we don't do anything.
That's correct.
I think you could draw some of my other questions about throughout the roofline and the impact to the potential families down there, which are some of the things that went with the packet. You said that, you said that there's no long-tail research on this, right? If I understood your comments back then, it's, this is fairly new. And this is that you don't have a lot of data that will kind of show me the impact to the environment and the impact to the neighbors or any impact to that if that was true.
I'll clarify, I'll say the city doesn't own or operate any solar carports. We do have solar system on, solar systems on a few of our buildings. And then what I meant to say was that Peninsula Clean Energy's program for installing solar on public buildings is recent. They ran this program beginning a couple of years ago. But the installing solar, like solar systems is not a new concept. And, and so I'm feeling very confident and supportive of this program in reducing our greenhouse gas emissions and then delivering on the energy savings that they have calculated.
My last question is, I feel like there's something a little bit similar in the Foster City Library, like the mall, that your statements say that it's.
There's solar carports there, yes.
Right, so is there comparison research data that shows that their apartments next could go much farther than one-story homes, so you can get the reflection and all that? Is there any of the concerns that the citizens have that would be addressed by the research of that Foster City's installation? Because that's been there for quite some time.
I haven't looked into the concerns that were addressed in Foster City system. I will say there were a ton of solar carport systems that went in throughout San Mateo in our school over this past year. So there's definitely movement in installing solar carports across the town. But I'm sorry, I don't have the exact information.
Okay. Well, one was before, I guess. I just wanted to make sure it was top. Commissioner, yeah?
Thank you for your presentation. I just have one question. Does the city consider other buildings or other rec centers besides their own?
Yes.
And which ones?
Yeah, the city looked at so many of our facilities. And I think the main challenge that I brought up is the fact that many of our buildings need roof replacements or serious roof repairs. There are also planned large-scale renovations at multiple of our recreation facilities. And because of the site-wide impacts of those planned renovations, installing solar and committing to a 20-year timeframe of the agreement made those sites not liable.
And I would also add that we looked at some of our other facilities that were not recreation facilities so that it would not have impacts on the facilities that our community uses the most. And we also ran into the same situation at those facilities. And so we did look first to the other facilities that would not have the impacts on the community. But we did, we did run into the same issues there.
Commissioner Jones, any questions?
Um, can you go back to me?
Sure. Commissioner Ocampo.
So just one, just one question regarding at the end of 20 years, we have the option of purchasing it? Or one other option would be to have it taken out? Is that another option? So two options?
No, three actually. Or extending the power purchase agreement where they offer another fixed rate for the, for another term?
Okay. Do we have historical data that shows like whether or not we're actually going to keep it? Or what's going to determine in 20 years whether or not we actually keep it? Is it just the cost savings or is it just going to be situational depending on where we are in 20 years?
Yeah, I think we'll have to evaluate where we are in 20 years and the financials of extending or removing, replacing. Yeah, that will have to be evaluated, the TBD.
I like the fact that we actually looked at other facilities as well. That was kind of my question as well. Did we look at anything else other than just the parks? I know there was one that was just built, I think in Bayside, so that's back at the back of Bayside, I think. So kudos to looking at different areas.
Any more? No, excellent. Excellent. Commissioner Donner, any questions for you?
Yes, I have one. Thank you for coming and presenting. Some things going on. I have a question regarding like the kind of gain we'll get from this, I guess. So in, at the end of 20 years, if you were to estimate, like, how do you think, or how much more money do you think you would get at the end of 20 years?
Yeah.
After establishing a carport? Carport.
Yeah, no, that's a great question about savings. So the, the current electricity rate, the blended average electricity rate that we pay at the rec center is 27 cents kilowatt hour. And the PPA price is going to come out to 0.274. So just a little bit over that price. However, we get to lock that rate in for 20 years and electricity rates are forecasted to increase year over year. And so with Peninsula Clean Energy's estimated savings for the 20-year, at a net present value, 3% discount rate, it's $185,900 for the lifetime of the carport. And so that's just the energy, the on-bill savings we'll see for the project. We're also avoiding the cost of paying for the solar installation ourselves.
Thank you. Any other questions? Excellent, okay. Okay, you mentioned 10 other cities or agencies that have been working with PC. Can you give any examples of projects like this that where cities are probably agencies and San Mateo has been partnering with PC?
Yeah, I don't have the full list in front of me, but I know for a fact, Menlo Park, Redwood City, Daly City. And the facilities vary, some are doing solar carports, some are doing solar like on a community center on the building. And yeah, so I'm talking about city agencies through this program.
Okay. And generally the feedback there, do your knowledge have been positive?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. You mentioned as part of the construction, needing to do boring to install conduit to connect the solar to the rec center.
Yes.
Who is covering the cost of that?
It's all covered through the contract.
Okay, so all of it is through PC?
All of it is through PC. The, yeah, the agreement is inclusive of all project construction, including the wiring, the trenching, everything I mentioned.
Okay. So they're holding a contract that's for multiple projects across the county? And so there's probably costs for them.
Exactly, what's happening is we're getting to leverage an economy of scale where we're deploying all these solar systems across the county and able to lock in a more favorable rate and socialize the, like, the cost of process projects.
Appreciate it. Okay, Commissioner Ocampo has started to ask about through the options of the 20-year mark. My understanding, although far from expert, is that solar panel technology has advanced quite a bit over time. You know, would there be some option for some third, you know, something wherein the solar panels perhaps were replaced in 20 years? You know, if they're much more efficient solar panels or some other better option, would that be available as well?
Yeah, I think you're pointing out, yeah, definitely an option at the end of the solar panel lifetime, it's replacement.
Great. Those are all my questions. I will just sort of add as a point of discussion that I appreciate the bringing of this project. We have, it's weird to say this, but as the person who's been on this commission longest of my fellow commissioners, we have looked at several wish lists of, you know, major renovations for our rec centers. And, you know, for the purpose of the audience, if anyone's listening on Zoom, yes. It's worthwhile to note that all of our rec centers, which are truly wonderful gifts to the community, are quite old to the point that when major renovation is done on them, ADA compliance is triggered. And so any kind of major renovation on our rec centers will require a lot of work. And, you know, there's, there's always sort of discussion about how we might get to a place where that's possible to fund. But in the absence of those major renovation projects, certainly our public resources for solar systems are needed. So again, I just, I want to say that I really appreciate the due diligence in looking at what sort of assets are available and knowing they're needed with this project. I'd say thank you. I will ask if there are any comments from the commissioners on this matter, any longer questions? Anybody, anyone? Excellent. Well, with that, I will remind everyone, this is an informational item and no action is necessary. But we very much appreciate the presentation and the partnership with PC and Parks and to members of the public, both on Zoom and here. Thank you for sharing your views and perspectives and please continue to do so. With that, we will move on to item number four. The annual parks survey, which is also an informational item. And we will be hearing from Marlene Silva, the deputy director of our school department.
Good evening, commissioners and members of our community who are present here and on Zoom. My name is Marlene Silva. I'm the deputy director for Parks and Recreation. And to your point, this is an informational presentation on the annual parks survey. You know, what are our results, what is our community saying? And what are the tidbits that we can garner to make improvements to our environments? Okay, so this was released to the public June 7th through June, or July, June 7th through July 7th. It was communicated in various paths, using social media, signs at our music series, signage at all of our parks, city newsletter and postings at our community centers for people to take the survey to help us gather information. 709 people responded, giving us their feedback. And we'll go ahead and move in. There was a total of 14 questions and these are kind of grouped in different areas, but we'll start with demographics. Question number 12, what is your age? As you can see here, the. As you can see here, the background and age break, breakup of those that respond to our survey. A little bit more information, question 13, which of the following best describes you? In regards to their background and what language do they speak at home? This survey was in English. It was also communicated in Spanish in flyers, but again, it was in English only. Next one. And then just confirm this, just in their packet? No, but now as you mentioned. Okay. All right, so we'll go into question number one, how often do you visit our parks? Overwhelmingly, 77% of the respondents visit at least once a week. This is very consistent with what we were seeing the year before, which is almost daily, if not once a week. I'll just leave it there that way you guys can go back real quick. Just so that everybody can read it since they don't have the packet. This will be posted on half of the news, great. All right, next one. What parks do you visit most often? And they had the ability to select up to five different parks. What we see here is last year, Central Park, Beresford and Laurelwood were in the top three. And this year, Seal Point made its way up to the top. So the top three again, Central Park, Beresford and now Seal Point, moving into the most visited out of all of our parks. You know, and one thing to point out, the, the reason for this question is for us to garner information on what is the traction and use of our parks to help us guide maintenance and future improvements? What time of day do you typically visit the park? And they had the opportunity to select up to, and as you can see by the results, from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, people are visiting various parks. What highlights here is the majority of the time is 2:30 PM to 7:00 PM, as well as 9:00 AM to 11:29, 11:30 is where we have our highest traffic. This helps give us some data points just for reference about our park rangers shifts. What hours are they deployed out into our community and if we need to make any adjustments? What equipment or amenities, if any, do you use most when you visit the park? And what we're seeing here is consistently a trend over the last couple of years. The majority of our community members definitely interested in our walking paths. One item to note regarding that is that we've received some great suggestions about documentation or signs at our park. Like, are you quarter mile? Are you a half a mile? What's the distance that you're walking in this park? Do you know, it's not everybody uses their watch to do it or their phone. So it definitely really helps us identify the needs of our community. Question number five. The city of San Mateo plays, or the parks play an important role in my life. As you can see with strongly agree and agree, 95% of our respondents are stating that this is very important to them. So definitely great news for us. Question number six. City of San Mateo Parks and Facilities meet my physical access needs. As you can see here as well, we are getting some positive reviews from our community in regards to us meeting basically their day-to-day needs when we're entering our parks. Next one. Park equipment amenities in safe condition. This is pretty much consistent with last year. Last year, we received approximately 68% of our respondents agreeing that either strongly agreeing or agreeing. And this moved up to 74.28% of the opinions of our community. Park landscaping is well maintained. And previous, previous year was approximately 80% of respondents agree and this year it moved up 5%. That's extremely positive. It's a reflection of what our staff is doing daily. I feel safe in the city of San Mateo Parks. Again, this is also indicator of the work that our park rangers do on day-to-day, going through all of our parks and being present. And from the community's perspective, 88% of them agree that they did feel safe in our parks. Next one. Have you seen one of the following parks recreation members in our park while you're visiting? 70% say maintenance workers, 40% park rangers, and then none of the above, and 15% recreation leaders. And that is consistent with the hours and the duties of our employees. Recreation, recreation leaders have limited responsibilities or taking groups out, they're doing programming. So it's not very common that they're going to be there, especially during those hours that we know that our community members are in our parks. What would you like to see more of in our parks? And our community members had up to three options. And this is pretty much consistent with what was seen last year. But water, bottle, bottle filling stations, shade structures and restrooms. Shade structures is definitely one that we are focusing on trying to garner as much data as possible. And, and what would it look like physically? Where should they be deployed? So this definitely supports the narrative of the need for shade structures, structures. Do you have any additional feedback or suggestions regarding our parks? If you don't have a pickleball t-shirt yet or a cup. But two major areas that we are already working on and talking about is areas for dogs to be able to play, whether on leash or a dog park. And some really interesting information was either they wanted more parks and off-leash areas or what are we doing about picking up what is left behind by our furry friends? Or aggressive dogs and concerns about that. And, you know, our park rangers are definitely educated on how to have these conversations with our community members when they, when they see things like this. But that definitely highlighted what our community is interested. And the infamous pickleball, that definitely has been a top priority as well for us as we are moving forward to identifying how to share our limited resources with not only test, but pickleball users. That's it. And so that concludes the information from our annual park survey. And just for information, one of the items that we're working on this next year is to add recreation to our survey as well so that we can get some information about our recreation centers. So with that.
Well, thank you, Marie, so much. Very informative. Do, I will open up public comment on this item. Shigavanna, do we have, if anyone on Zoom wishes to make public comment, please raise your hand, press the raise hand button and please unmute yourself on call. Does not appear we have any hands raised.
We do not have this.
And are there any comments from the gallery?
We do not have any because the slope's.
Very good. Then with that, I will close public comment. And I will ask, do my fellow commissioners have any questions? I will also start with anybody to share their thoughts.
I do.
Excellent.
Thanks, Marie. Great presentation. And this survey is one of my favorite things to share. Does the survey capture whether the respondent has a physical disability?
I don't believe that is one of the questions. The question is more about, does it meet your needs? But to the specifics, do you have a disability? That question is not asked.
Yeah, the reason, reason I'm curious is that while the survey respondents say, 90% of the respondents say, no problems with access at all. I noted that there were 11 respondents who said, this is terrible. And then there's 10% in between. And if you would look at, if we were to look at the general population, I would guess, and this is completely uneducated, but maybe 10% of the general population will have a form of physical disability. And so I'm wondering if we can find out if persons with disabilities and particularly the more significant physical disabilities are actually having a very hard time using our own solar. I would love to find a way to capture that.
Absolutely. The great feedback for us. Thank you.
No more questions?
Commissioner Travis, any questions?
Three.
Excellent. Let's hear it.
One of them fills on what you were saying about, I was the same question, does it meet my physical needs? And I wanted to see if there was any comments as to we can garner why it didn't meet those needs for the lower end of it. Because maybe that would kind of reveal why it didn't.
Yes, I know that there was some areas where there was free comments and I don't know, Joanne, if you were able to review all of them.
I don't think so. I, I mean, we tried to group them all by category and I don't recall seeing any, but I will go back and look again.
I think that will elaborate.
Yeah.
Number two was, there was a, it says shaded structure has moved up into the top three. So that tells me that, of course, global warming and things going on. So are we have, are we generating or thinking about any ideas that can anticipate what we're going to be feeling in the next few years when it comes to being out in public and the shading and more water and all that stuff? Is that something that you guys have kind of put for brainstorming, whiteboarding or something on as to?
We definitely are taking a lot of feedback from our community members, especially, as you said, to the change of the environments and much more need of the structures to protect them. As many, as someone had already commented, I think Commissioner Witcher presented said, people come to our area, there's, you know, a lot of great weather here. But this has now become a concern. And even though we had not earmarked it before, it has become a priority for us this year because as commissioners or bills mentioned, we need to plan these out and figure out what's the cost going to be so that we can better plan for it. But in regards to data points about the change of climate, that's not something that we have investigated yet.
Can I just add an additional comment? We also are trying to be more strategic about our treatment at parks to ensure that we're shading areas that are seating areas or areas adjacent to playgrounds that can offer additional shade in addition to actual physical structures.
And then the last one was our little furry friends that you had up there. So I thought, was that potentially an opportunity to, and I think maybe we had the presentation earlier about classes or education or community events? So is it an opportunity where people are competing with their dogs and, as you said, pick up things or training? To maybe have some community training or discipline or obedience courses in the evening or around the time that they're there? As just a, you know, kind of community gathering?
Partnership.
Yeah, we're all here together, let's train our dogs or let's do something kind of.
That's a, that's a great idea, great feedback for us to move forward with.
No more than four.
I'm looking forward to additional questions. Commissioner Chiavi, any questions for you?
I have one, but then I may have, you may have actually answered my question. Was the survey advertised online? Oh, I just heard that online?
Yeah, QR code. Yeah.
So we put signs in the park so that people could access the survey as they were walking through the park so that they could know that we're conducting it.
Okay, so you're targeting people who visit the park?
Correct. And we also did it at special events. We put it on our website. We communicated it through the newsletter. So we tried different avenues. I also think we.
It was on Instagram.
Instagram and city newsletter. Email and at the community centers or providers.
Commissioner Jones, any questions for you?
I have one question. So we've been seeing a lot of increases, which is very great, like increases on the general public's approval of what we're doing. I was wondering, was there an increase of survey responders this year compared to last year?
I have the answer to that. So it was very similar to last year, although the year before that was about 200 responses or 260. So the last two years, we've had much more of a robust response.
Thank you. I love the survey. I also take it and look forward to it every year as well. When we looked at the top three parks, I was just curious, is there data that shows maybe the fourth and fifth park? It was just generally curious what those.
Yeah, I believe there's data available, but we'd have to garner the raw data.
And then also for the, the dogs, the furry, the fur babies. So dog, I saw a dog off-leash area. Are we considering adding a dog off-leash area more?
Yeah, so this year, our parks manager from Hostic, that's one of the projects that he's working on, is to evaluate what are the potential opportunities within our city? What, what are the desires and what is the fiscal impact and options that would come with it? And when we have that information, we definitely will be presenting.
And we still have an active dog area trial over.
We should incorporate that with the idea of like the obedience training at the same time.
Okay. Okay. I heard you say that the, next year, there's going to be an incorporation of recreation facilities feedback. Has there ever been questions on rec classes feedback?
It will include rec.
As well as. Right. You know, I think Parks are the gem of San Mateo. I think our rec classes are also amazing. That was how I first got involved and decided to be on this commission was taking tennis classes at Beresford Park. Excellent. I have a question that's probably more for Joanne. You know, in thinking about shading, I'm reminded that we haven't heard from our arborist in quite a while. Do we have an arborist with the city or are we contracting out?
What's, what's the story with an arborist in San Mateo? Currently, we have ten, one of us who is our acting energy arborist in the city. So we have still a couple of vacancies in the arbor division. So you were working on bringing in that.
Excellent. Well, I just, I remembered Matt's departure and then didn't know if it was. Shoes. Excellent. Well, I will just say again, I really appreciate all the work of the survey. Listen, a few years ago, things were a bit challenging, but, you know, these people are out and about more. It's good to work with more seniors. I watched the survey and I don't know if this makes statistics significant or not, but still a nice response. And unless my other fortune probably is, and thinking about equity and inclusion, you know, ways as my fellow commissioners suggested. Any further comments on the survey? You have a lot of questions? All right, all right. Very good. Well, with that, we will say thank you to Marie for her presentation. And thank you to all of the park staff who helped to promote responding to the survey. I know it's a, it's a, a nice balance of trying to get really, you know, substantive information but also not making it too long so people can actually fill it out. And with that, I will ask, Joanne, do you have any announcements?
I sure do. I just have a few and I will be quick. So we have, will be canceling our upcoming meeting on October 6th due to the holiday and rescheduling it for a special meeting in September 30th. It's proposed for a joint meeting, more information to come, but we're trying to coordinate those efforts.
The joint meeting with?
Sorry, the senior commissioner.
Right.
Youth commissioner update, Serene has vacated the position and has gone to college. And so the city clerk, the city clerk's office will be conducting recruitment in the fall. So hopefully we'll have more information to report back in the next. Fall classes and programs have started. It's not too late to register, so make sure you spread the word. And just a couple of facilities updates. Both Casanova and Shoreview Park restroom facility renovations have been completed. And Lake Shore is currently under construction, so that's very great news. And then if any of you have seen, Beresford entrance is under construction. And wanted to let people know, I know that access has been challenging for some people. So if you're interested in registering, right across the street at the senior center, they can help with program registration as well. You don't have to come to city hall necessarily in case you have issues trying to get into Beresford. And I just wanted to mention a couple of upcoming events. We have our Movies in the Park series starting this Friday night at Central Park. And I believe they are playing The Marvels movie. And so we'll have a series for every Friday in September. September 9th on V down at the pedestrian mall, celebrating the city's 130th birthday. That is actually today, or yesterday, I think, yesterday. That will be on Thursday, September 12th and Thursday, September 19th down at the pedestrian mall. And our newest event in collaboration with our Parks and Recreation Department and PAL, Police Actively League, we are doing a Bark in the Park on Sunday. we are doing a Bark in the Park on Sunday, September 15th. So I hope you all can join.
Joanne, anything else from the other staff? No. And my fellow commissioners, do you have any announcements? Do you feel Republican or fellow commissioners?
Quick one?
Yes, please.
I, I think we take, I, I managed the letter from the student at Caccino High School.
Excellent.
So I, on the first day of class this year, I called the high school and tried to contact her, since she graduated. And so what I did was send an email to them that they would forward to her if they could find her. And I thanked her for her interest, pointed her to the correct park to city hall, and offered to facilitate that if they find her. And also strongly encouraged her to look at the volunteer opportunities in the city and sent a link for that as well.
Excellent, excellent. And for those in the room a little lost, each one of the members of this commission received a letter around our, our last meeting in June from a local high school student concerned about the welfare of ducks in San Mateo. But it was a physical letter in mail and some bit of challenge, both because of some transparency rules in the state of California, which we appreciate, so we couldn't deliberate. And then also actually reaching out to her. So I appreciate the due diligence on that by chair and chair and the positive inclusion that we wish to. And with that, let's adjourn this meeting. Yeah. Welcome.